...by the Ward 4 Dems, the Chevy Chase Citizens Association, and ANC 34G. We tried to combine as much as we could so that we didn't have as many forum for these candidates to attend, and we got a nice turnout tonight. Okay, on our listservs, we've been putting out that we wanted questions to be sent ahead of time, and we have a lot of really good questions tonight, so we're not going to be taking questions from the audience. But we will start by introducing the co-moderator. I'm Samantha Nolan, and this is Candace Nelson. Good evening, everyone. How are you doing? We're so happy to have you here tonight. I am president of the Ward 4 Democrats, which, as you've heard, is one of the groups that is co-sponsoring this event tonight. Our own goal gives us two votes. We want to make sure that you are informed. This is a voter education event. We're glad to have you here. This is your chance to hear from every single candidate, nonpartisan. Everybody is up here, from all their parties. So we hope that you enjoy it. We have questions here, and we're ready to get started. So here's the next part of the tutorial. You have a speaker in front of you, and there's a little button. They're on batteries, and if everybody leaves their button on all the time, it will run out before we're done tonight. So please only press the button when you're about to talk, and then count to three, because the signal has to go from your mic across the room to the box. And if you just start talking right away, it won't pick up your voice. So press the button, speak right into the mic, and count to three. Everybody got that? Glad that all of you can make it. Now, Councilmember Barnes is otherwise committed at another forum and/or at an event, so she's only going to be with us for a moment. And we will start with her opening statement and go right down the row, so if you'll press your button, you can start right away.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. Can you hear me now? Okay. It is an absolute pleasure to be here with you. I had hoped that I would have had more time for cookies and water and the goodies, but I do not. But I did want to greet you, because you are out here in the community in earnest to learn more about the candidates that are on your--will be on your ballot. And I'm one of those candidates, and I am here because I am asking for your vote. I am the Democratic nominee. The Ward 4 Democrats know that, because they're a democratic organization. But I want you to know that. And I want you to know that when I say I'm a Democratic nominee, it is because I subscribe to democratic principles and objectives, including to make sure that our city becomes safe for everyone and that we have affordable housing for everyone. I have about a minute left, but I just wanted to stop by and I did want to ask how many of you participated in the primary forum? Because I believe I remember seeing many of you, and I thank you again for your participation then. We have a number of issues before the government today, and they will continue. The government is a thriving vessel, as I call it. There will always be issues that we have to wrestle with down at the council. Some things we have solved and done very well, but other things we need your continuous probing to make sure that we can do the right thing. I like to look at my vote as a vote on behalf of the citizens of the District of Columbia, and I will continue to look at my vote that way. And I thank you again, time is up. Thank you.
Before you start, I want to introduce our timekeeper. It's Randy Speck, our chair of our ANC here in Chevy Chase. He's our timekeeper. The opening statements are two minutes long, and he will signal you at one minute and 30 seconds, and 15 seconds, and then the time to stop. The rest of our questions will be one minute long, and he will also be letting you know your time. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ralph J. Gillum, Sr., and I am a Republican candidate who's running for at-large member of the D.C. Council. I too had a conflict tonight. The D.C. Republican Party is holding a meeting for Republican candidates, but I thought instead of hanging out and talking to my base, let me come up here and hang out and talk with a diverse audience of people. So I am here, and I thank you all for coming out. I'm running because we need to have different voices. We need to have opposition voices. We need to have alternative voices on the council. And I'm running because I want to bring that voice. I moved to D.C. in 1978 through Howard University. I graduated four years later, as I say, with a degree in political science and a fiance named Patricia. And we've been married ever since. She's a sixth-generation Washingtonian. We've raised four children here in D.C. They all attend D.C. public schools. All four of them have gone on to graduate from college. So therefore, there are a lot of good and great things here in the District of Columbia. There are also some things that still are wrong and that need to be fixed. Everyone in this room understands that the educational system in D.C. really depends upon your zip code. If you live in a certain zip code, you can walk to a good school. If you live in another zip code, you have to get on at least one or two buses and ride across town to get a quality education. We all know that in the District of Columbia, your zip code also determines your readily, easily available access to medical care. For the capital of the most powerful nation on the face of the earth, those two disparities make absolutely no sense whatsoever. We also know that crime in D.C. is going up. Homicides and assaults for 2018 have already surpassed the total number for 2017. Clearly, what we are doing is not working, and we need to do something different. Ralph J. Gillum, Sr., I want your vote. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ruston Lewis. I'm running for the D.C. City Council at-large as an independent. I am an educator by training. I've worked for a number of nonprofits as CEO of College Bound. Absolutely. Did everyone see me? Okay, I'm sorry. My name is Ruston Lewis. I'm running for the independent at-large city council race. I'm an educator by training. My background is that I've been CEO of College Bound, College Summit, and D.C. Promise Neighborhood Initiative, as I am also faculty member of the University of the District of Columbia. Academically, I have a doctorate in public administration and a master's in public administration. And my career has allowed me to work with a lot of educators. And speaking with those educators, oftentimes, they would tell me that they can't afford to live in this city, and that's really what got me out here. And as I continued to speak with educators, I ran into police officers and other government employees, they would say that they just can't afford to live in the city. So I decided to get out here and do something about it. I think D.C. is a great city. It's flourishing. We have Starbucks everywhere, but it's not an inclusive city. I'd like to see a city where people can work and live in the same place. So my name is Ruston Lewis, and I've decided to get out here and try to be that agent for change in the city, to make sure it's an inclusive city. Thank you.
I know I really had to say it's Ruston, but stay. Good evening. My name is Deion Reader, and I'm running to be your next at-large city councilman. I'm running in this race because for several reasons. Just to tell you a little bit about who I am, I am a native Washingtonian, and I live in the house that I grew up in. I've had the pleasure of serving this city in several different capacities. Each day, I cross the bridge to serve residents in Ward 8, because there I have arrested one. I started off my career after graduating from high school, going on to college, and coming back home, working on my master's in divinity here at Howard University. I started off working for Congressman Bruce Bento on Capitol Hill, transitioned my time and went right into the administration, working on college prep programs, assisting young people get into college. I then later worked as a grants manager for Anthony Williams when he was a CFO. The work was done very well. I actually developed a violence intervention program along North Capitol Street and transitioned and became the neighborhood service coordinator in Ward 8. And that's when I actually saw the disparities across this city. The way I grew up in War I, it was not the way many families lived in Ward 8, and I spent my time there for the last 20 years. I then became a deputy director for the nonprofit organization, the first one is bringing Anacostia, the first bus boys and boys. And then I had the wonderful pleasure of becoming an employer, filling the gap of need in a food--in a community where there's a food desert. It's imperative that you understand that I have vast amount of experience in government, understanding the needs of all residents, and I'm excited for this opportunity to actually serve, continue to serve, as an elected official, once you give me your vote. Again, my name is Deion Reader, an independent voice that we need in our city council, and I'm looking forward to engaging you tonight. Thank you.
Good evening. I could call you neighbors, but I live in Ward 4, but I do shop at the Brutus regularly. My name's David Schwartzman. I'm the candidate of the D.C. State Marine Party. We're the only balanced party that does not take corporate or developer donations. That's only true of me. I've lived in D.C. the last 42 years. I grew up in Brooklyn. I--well, let's put it this way. I was a professor emeritus of Howard University, and I retired in 2012. I'm an environmental scientist, a climate scientist, and I have--I've been an activist for human rights and peace for over 60 years. So what are my major focus in this campaign? We became a human--the first human rights city in the United States about 10 years ago, and yet we have two egregious violations of human rights that continue. And I think anyone with a conscience of this city should be concerned about it, and that's child poverty, a rate almost as high as Mississippi, and homelessness. And there are about 6,000 students that are homeless that go to school every day. So these are the human rights violations I'm committed to work to terminate, because we have a tax base to do it. We have a tax base where folks earning over $200,000 would get a big tax cut, and we should raise it from the feds, and we can raise their D.C. income tax rate, and they'll end up paying the same amount and have about $400 million to address these issues. Thank you.
Good evening, Chevy Chase neighbors. I'm Alyssa Silverman, and for the last four years, it's been my honor and privilege to represent you as one of the independent at-large members of the council. I shall tell you that part of the Silverman family is in the CMC. My brother Jonathan lives in Connecticut in Livingston, so I'm very familiar with this neighborhood. I see the council member responsibilities primarily three things: oversight, making sure we spend your taxpayer dollars well; legislation, making sure that we are implementing the public policy that will make this a more just and equitable city; and of course, constituent services, making sure we actually deliver for your taxpayer dollars. So I have gotten some criticism, because I ask the tough questions. In my opinion, we spend a lot of your taxpayer dollars, and we don't get much for it. The power that never gets filled. The rec--someone was telling me about here actually a Chevy Chase rec center that the classes are oversubscribed, but we can't get recreation equipment here. We have a $14 million budget, folks. Chevy Chase Recreation Center should be able to have recreation equipment for that money. Let me talk about legislation. I think--I know it's probably a lot of Washington Post readers in this crowd, the legislation that I'm known for, and that is a point of controversy in this race, is paid family leave. I am thrilled to be the co-author of that bill, and I hope we'll talk more about it, because that's a distinct difference in this race. Primarily, let me just say a lot of the data. I don't take more for contributions. I take being an independent seriously. That means I'm independent from special interests. So thank you so much. Look forward to this debate.
All right, we can have a round of applause for all of our candidates. We're going to wait until the end, though, for the next applause, so individual. That will take up a lot of our time if we applaud after every statement, and we won't get as many questions answered. Okay, so the next portion will be--we'll start asking questions. You get one minute each, and our timekeeper will let you know how you're doing. You've all seen what they look like. I think you can hear them from their--from where they are, and they'll be more comfortable rather than jumping up and down if they can just sit and answer. We're going to rotate who starts each round. So Dr. Lewis, you're next in line to start. And the question is this: In the first nine months of 2018, there were more homicides in the district than in all of 2017. Police Chief Nusham has placed at least some of the blame for this increase on the proliferation of illegal guns. He has urged the council to increase the mandatory minimum sentence for felons in possession of a firearm. What should the council do to address this increase in violent crimes?
So as I shared earlier, my background is youth in education, youth development in education. I think that we have to invest more in our young people. I think that from the work that I've done with the Department of Youth and Rehabilitative Services, it is critical that we help them develop vocational skills, that we help them acquire their GED. This, I believe, will lower the crime rate in the District of Columbia. I was recently a victim of crime myself while on the campaign trail. My car was stolen. I understand--my car was stolen. I recognize that that doesn't solve all the issues, but I do think when we create opportunities-- and again, my platform is focused on equity, so when we create opportunities for jobs and education across the board, we minimize the likelihood of crime occurring. Now, that's not necessarily a placebo for everything, but I do think it's a major strong foot forward. In terms of guns on the street, I believe that we have to have strong penalties for violent crimes, but I think that we have to create opportunities for people to have chances to advance forward and move forward.
Well, I appreciate the question, because for a great portion of my career, I actually worked on being intermediary with interventionists with youth violence. And I believe there's several ways that we can address this. The one that I believe is the most important is that you actually have to institute wraparound resources. This isn't a problem that is actually the government's problem or the community's problem, but we share it together. I do know that there is an important place for the penalties, but you can't lock yourself up out of every problem. There are evidence-based opportunities, which involves community-based organizations, faith-based organizations, and the government partnering together to, one, provide opportunities for families, but more importantly, look at the community and change the environmental structure in that community so that families that are actually living in those communities do not have to use violence as a way to deal with issues. That's something that affects all of us, from Ward 1 through A, so we can't isolate that by just locking everyone up, but we have to deal with the root causes of these issues, and that's a lack of opportunities for families to thrive.
The D.C. Council passed the NEAR Act, Neighbor Engagement to Achieve Results. This is modeled after successful programs in other cities where the community engages in preventing violence and basically addresses the issue of homicides and so on, but because the community is active in this process. And guess what? It's been funded but not implemented. So I call for the implementation of the NEAR Act. The second part of this is that our police department is not transparent. They have jump outs where they target black youth especially. They harass them, and you know the whole pattern of what Black Lives Matters is about? That police have killed black folk, okay? And it's occurred here in D.C. as well. So we need to address violence, including the violence of the police against the black folk especially.
Thanks for the question. Unfortunately, the NRA's stranglehold on Congress prevents us from really doing anything about deploying guns into the district. And here's what I would say: We need to spend your taxpayer dollars on programs that work. Year after year, we give money to the same people, and we get the same results, which are not good results, which end up in homicides. So what I did this budget cycle was Attorney General Carl Racine said there is a, what they call an evidence-based program, a program that's worked in Chicago and Baltimore, and I said, "Let's fund it. Let's bring it here." It's called Cure Violence. It's an approach that is called violence interruption, in which you use what's called credible messengers, people who have relationships in the community, and they prevent the violence from occurring. So I put $360,000 from my committee, the Labor Committee, into this program.
Chief Nusham is correct. We have wraparound services. We have programs. We have everything out the wazoo. But crime is still increasing. So clearly, all the programs, all the wraparound services, all of the loving things that we do are not working. Chief Nusham is correct. If you use an illegal gun in the commission of a crime in the District of Columbia, there should be mandatory minimums. When you talk to the police officers, they will tell you it is the same people who are doing these crimes repeatedly. They arrest them, and before the ink is dry on the report, the person is back out on the street, they haven't done an illegal gun, and they're committing the crime again. These individuals need to be taken off of our streets so they can stop terrorizing us. And bringing in programs from a place like Chicago is really going to help, because what's their homicide rate? So we need to be honest, and we need to have some serious conversations that are going to be uncomfortable.
Thank you. We're going to shift the focus now to the school board. So years ago, we know the basic control of the public schools was removed from the school board and was placed under the mayor's control. There is now some movement to reverse some of that control back to the school board. What is your view on this issue? And we will start with Ms. Reader.
Wait my three seconds. Well, I actually had the pleasure of attending school in the District of Columbia under both the independent school board and under the mayor. For me, not the streets mayor, not that guy. But for me, I've actually--I believe the issue is really school accountability, and we have to have a curriculum that's equitable across this city. Children should not be forced to have to be blessed across the city to attend a better school. So for me, it's not about losing control. It's about what the curriculum looks like, and it has to be equitable across Wards 1 through Wards 8. So my focus will be, once elected, it's about accountability in our school system so that our public school system and our charter school systems are receiving the same amount of resources to provide the same amount of productive care to our children each and every day. So it's about school accountability, not so much about losing control. School accountability is important.
Well, my view is that the mayor will control the schools since that failure. We should go back to an elected school board, and all the scandals, I'm sure you're aware of corruption in the process, you know, getting in advance on the waiting list to go to a certain school. By the way, my youngest son went to Wilson and Ross and had a great education. But the fundamental problem is we have ongoing disparities in school performance, and we have black kids generally, on average, do worse than white. And it's partly for what Deion said, but it's also fundamentally because of the impact of child poverty. And scholars like Diane Roberts and others have pointed out this is a big impact, and it hurts the family, it hurts the child, and it hurts--it reduces the quality of life of everyone that lives in D.C. That's why child poverty is my priority.
I do think we've spent way too much time talking about governance and not about actual school outcomes. As has been said, and I agree with my colleagues up here, we have a gaping achievement gap between black and white students. I think we also have to deal--I think the bigger issue we have to deal with is school choice. And I'm not just talking about charters. I'm talking about the lottery system. So we have a game of chance right now, that is our public school system, and it impacts Ward 3 and students at Lafayette, because Wilson is overcrowded, because in other parts of the city, people don't have confidence that their neighborhood school is going to serve their family well. So what happens in our city is everyone, and I know many of my friends are in this group, move to your neighborhood so they can be in either Lafayette, Janney, Deale, Wilson, Peter, Patter, which creates overcrowded Wilson. What we need to do is actually making sure families have confidence, whether they're in Five or Eight or Ward 2, to stay in their neighborhood schools, so we have equitable schools across the city.
We all know why Mayor Al Teney, when the schools occurred in the first place, it had nothing to do with education, and had everything to do with the $10 million in modernization funds that hit the table, and that mayor wanted to be able to control that money so that he could give it to his friends, families, and brothers. Nothing has changed. We need to get the mayor out of the school system. We need to re-implement an elected school board. We need to de-politicize the school system, and we need to get a system back in place where educators educate and politicians keep their nose out of areas in which they don't belong. It makes no sense that children in certain neighborhoods, as I said in my opening statement, have to take buses across the city to get a proper education. The educational system in this city is more akin to apartheid South Africa, where if you live in a certain neighborhood, you're educated, and if you live in another area, you are not. We can do better than D.C. We must do better than D.C., because it doesn't affect just the children in the poor neighborhoods. It's affecting everyone across the city.
Mayor, control is not working. As an executive from a nonprofit, I used to use a simple philosophy: Let experts do what experts do. So you bring in people who have expertise in education to run the school system. It's just that simple. It's not working. When I ran College Bound in '99, the graduation rate here was hovering around 70%. It's projected to be 40% next year. It's not working. It's time to change it.
Thank you all. Could each of you please identify two issues on which you disagree with the mayor and will publicly push back against her agenda?
I'd intend to 20 issues, but I'll start with two. Fundamentally, we've had a trickle-down philosophy of trickle-down economics and trickle-down housing. It's not only this present mayor. It's been going on for several decades. And I'm not personalizing this. This is a mindset. This is a policy which we need to change, radically change. We have to change the priorities. Instead of trickle-down, we need policies that address the human needs of our folk and not the money needs of big developers, because we see an imbalance of power. The federal city council has a huge impact on the gender of elected government, and we have to resist that. Paid family leave is one example. The other is the initiative '77 repeal. If you read Tony Williams' column, you'll know why.
Thank you.
I'll start with paid family leave. I'm the co-author of the legislation, and I believe that, you know, we are one of only three countries in the world that doesn't offer a national paid family leave program. What I mean by paid leave is that when you are at a critical life moment, whether it's a great one, welcoming a new child into your family, or a really challenging one, saying goodbye to an aging parent-- or a really challenging one, saying goodbye to an aging parent, that you have the ability to do that without financial repercussions. The mayor is against paid family leave. I'm for it. I think it's going to be very good for our city. I'll pick another issue that I think gets at the independence. So we had, we have a hospital east of the Anacostia River, the United Medical Center. People have read a lot of stories about it. There was an operator there who was politically connected to the mayor, who was just, it was abysmal what was happening in that hospital. I voted against renewing their contract, went against the mayor. We actually won the fight.
Well, clearly, one issue I definitely disagree with on the mayor's control of the schools. And we just dealt with that just a moment ago. But also, not just this mayor, but we have a history in this city of embracing tax-and-spend philosophy. Where whatever harebrained idea comes through the council, when they decide they want to fund it, the first thing they do is reach into our pockets to find the money for it. There is never any accountability inside the district government. They never have to tighten their belts and tighten their budgets to where we have to be to make our ends meet. And also, talking about this hospital, it makes no sense that residents of Ward Seven or Ward Eight now have to wait until 2023 for a Level One trauma center, when we could open four urgent care centers, which do not exist now anywhere east of the Anacostia River. And we could open those four centers in the next 12 months with what amounts to a math error in a $14.5 billion budget. We could open those four urgent care centers for under $2 million and improve health outcomes in the District of Columbia in 12 months.
Well, I think we discussed the school system. And for me, as an educator, that's one of the big pieces. Again, we're not preparing our young people for the future. And we are failing them, literally failing them. And, you know, a friend of mine used to say, the village is on fire. And it really is. We're not doing our jobs to ensure a bright future for our young. But my other issue is the development. I think that the city is overdeveloping. I remember when I ran a mentoring program over at the Navy Yard, right there in the church, St. Matthew's Baptist Church, over at the Navy Yard metro station. All of that's been developed. All those families are gone. Where did they go? We're looking at Berry Farms being redeveloped. I have a big issue with overdevelopment. I think that's what we're doing. And of course, it's impacting our infrastructure as well.
I have a couple. I'll just say two. One is, I believe our ANC commissioners should retain their ability to vote on their zoning rights and what's happening in your community. I think local government starts with your ANC's and your neighborhoods. So that's imperative for me. The second one is, I believe DC government needs to pay their fair share of the water bills. So that we're not seeing an increase in our. I think it's horrible what we're seeing happen in our communities, especially for those of us, many of our seniors. I think it's terrible that our seniors are now being forced to pay double, almost triple, in this water bill. And that's mainly because DC government isn't paying their fair share. Neither is the federal government. And I think that's quite frankly, I think that's horrible. I tell people often, if my parents were living here today, my sister and I would have to care for them because they couldn't afford the quality of life that they deserve. So those are my two. One is ANC should be able to do what necessary in their communities. And the second one is definitely the government needs to pay their fair share of this water bill. Thank you.
So two of you led into two topics that we have questions about. We'll address the affordable housing one first. And we'll just simply ask, what would you do on the council to increase the district stock of affordable housing? Starting with Councilwoman S ølberg.
Terrific. Only a minute. We're in a housing, we're in an affordability crisis in our city. We need to be a lot more strategic and we need to think like developers think. Here's one specific thing I'll give you. A lot of you are familiar with an innovative tool we have called Tenant Opportunity to Purchase, TOPA. It's when a building goes up for sale, tenants can purchase it. But it's incredibly difficult to execute. We have a law called District Opportunity to Purchase. We have an interest, and so the district could act on behalf of tenants. And we don't buy the building as a city, but what we do is we pause the sale and then we marry tenants to a nonprofit developer to keep the building affordable. That would be a game changer, especially in Ward Three, especially in this area. All the big buildings on Connecticut and Wisconsin Avenue that go up for sale, instead of making them into, you know, studios and one-bedrooms in the high 500, 600,000s, we could keep them either rental or affordable homes. So we need to be much more strategic.
When the district enters into these deals with these developers, the developers are, by contract and agreements, supposed to provide affordable housing. Here's the problem with that. What they're not providing is what I call family housing. When you talk about the flight of people being pushed out of Washington DC, we're talking about families being pushed out. Families that have two or more children who need three or more bedroom units. Because of the district law, which you have children of a different sex. After a certain age, they can't share a bedroom. So you have to have a three-bedroom unit. But these developers are not required under these sweetheart deals to provide family housing. So what we need to do is insert that language specifically to require family housing. Because if you need a three-bedroom apartment in Washington DC, I dare you to find it for under $3,000 a month. So we need to rework these agreements so that these developers build family affordable housing and be specific in our language.
Well, a couple of things I would want to explore. One, I think with the community building block rent and HUD home programs, we look at how we can better finance what we're building. I would want to meet with not just the developers, but also the investors to make sure that we are working towards building workforce housing, which is something I'm incredibly passionate about. Again, I believe if you work in the city, you should live somewhere in the city. I think we should explore all of the current incentives that developers are given to ensure that we have regulations around those incentives to advocate for more affordable housing. And then I also want to, and this could be a little controversial, be more transparent about the relationships that developers have when supporting elected officials.
Honestly, this is definitely not enough time. This is one of my platform issues, but I'm going to try to rush it through. One is, we have a program currently, it's called Housing Investment Platform, it's HIPS. I would love to see more money actually invested in that program. If you're not familiar with that program, it gives families an opportunity to have a rent-to-own option. My parents, almost 42 years ago, purchased their home in Columbia Heights through a rent-to-own option. They were working-class people and that is actually how my sister and I are able to have the house today. That's one. The second one, many of the families that I definitely worked with directly in Berry Farm, we were able to get many of those families right out of Berry Farm through, again, an opportunity to purchase using their Housing Choice voucher to purchase homes through a Section Three program. So we have to move families that we're talking about. If we're serious about moving families into affordable housing, we have to first get families into a sustainable place to be able to afford to live in DC. And that's the first piece.
I'll give you a list first. Public housing needs to be fixed. For a low-income public, it's virtually the only affordable housing there is. So we need to put more money into fixing. Of course, the federal government isn't. We know who's in charge there. Secondly, social housing. In Scandinavia, this is a model we should look to. This is a mixed income, government-owned, and affordability is guaranteed. Here in the United States, it's 30% of your income for housing. And by the way, 90% of renters, who are 60% of DC's residents, are paying more than 30%, maybe 50 and 80%. Other, one other method, one other for time, time's almost up. TOPA, there are 4,000 vacant units. Why not use TOPA and make them affordable for people who need housing, affordable housing? That's, there are many things we exclude. The capitalist market is not going to do it.
Okay, we're going to go this way, this time. We'll sit down a little bit and we'll start with Councilwoman S ølberg.
Turn on your mic.
Sorry. Thank you. Okay, this is a long question. Okay, it's about CRYAC. DC Water's Clean River Impervious Area Charge, called CRYAC, has become a substantial burden on nonprofits like St. John's High School and the Noel Wood Retirement Community and on many residential customers. Those charges will continue to escalate over the next decade, while the district government does not pay for its own contributions to storm water runoff for streets, sidewalks, and alleys, which make up most of what the impervious area actually is in our district, in DC. There was a very small appropriation in the FY 2018 budget to provide some assistance. But what more do you think the district government should do to relieve the burden that CRYAC places on DC water customers? And we'll start with you.
Terrific. We need to give more assistance. So just to be clear about what CRYAC is. So until recently, when we had a big rainstorm, all the sewage overflow went into the Amcastia River. And that created a very unhealthy and dirty river for everyone, especially for the communities right next to it in wards five, six, seven, and eight. So what we did was, we spent money, $2 billion, to actually channel that overflow into our sewage treatment plant. That's a good thing. The problem is, we did this impervious charge, which impacts a lot of institutions that don't have a lot of money. Schools, churches, you know, any kind of parking service. So we need to, we need to create a more equitable system. We should penalize a church that has a cemetery for the CRYAC charge.
Yes, I agree with Alyssa on this. The number I've seen for this, our own DC government impervious surface is something like 40 million. And that's about 40% of the total. So I think that, to begin with, the DC government should pay the whole thing out of our general funds. And we can create the revenue stream to do that if we have a more progressive tax structure and switch the subsidies that go to gentrification and displacement for high-rent stuff and condos. Switch it to human needs and to real needs. And then on a long-term basis, I think we need to have a progressive structure for paying the impervious charge and similar to traffic fines, which should be based on income, like in Finland.
Fortunately, I answered, I answered this question earlier. I think the district government, the federal government, needs to pay their fair share. And that will eliminate the increase that we are all feeling as residents. They need to pay their fair share. And I think that's where you asked me earlier, where I disagreed with the mayor. And that's one of the areas where you will see, if the district government and the federal government pay their fair share, we will not see the increase that we currently, all of us, are seeing in our water bill. So my answer is very straightforward. Everybody should pay their fair share. It shouldn't be on the residents to do it. Thank you.
So I agree with Dionne. I mean, personally, it's something I'm very passionate about. I know I pay almost $130 a month and I don't even have Goldfish dog and live by myself. I think it's absolutely ridiculous that you pay that much money in water, right? But I would also want to see some kind of incentive, something to incentivize or support against our seniors and the churches, because they are really being hit hard with the impervious water bill. I also would like to look at how our developers are, how we can possibly tax our developers, tax our developers as well to help pay for some of this, our high water bills.
I'm not going to leave, I'm not going to leave a minute to this. The district and the feds need to pay what they owe, period, end of discussion. If they pay what they owe, with all of the hundreds of thousands of square feet in the city, the amount that we, the residents, would have to pay would be nominal increases. Very simply, the district and the federal government need to pay what they owe.
Okay, now let's talk about DCRA.
DC what?
CRA. The Department of Consumer and Regulatory Affairs has a broad range of responsibilities. And Council Chair Mendelson has criticized it as requiring, has criticized it as requiring major changes. He has proposed that DCRA be broken up into the Department of Buildings and a Department of Licensing and Consumer Protection. What problems do you see with DCRA's performance? And what would you do on the council to address those problems? And we're going to start with Dr. Swartz.
Well, actually, I heard Chairman Mendelson present this plan at the Grassroots Planning Coalition just this weekend. And so I got a little preview of what the question is. I think it's a good first approach. DCRA regulation and so on for many small businesses, of course, is thought to be onerous and too complicated. I would say that we need to look at that aspect. We should discourage entrepreneurship in small businesses because of endless paperwork and so forth. I also support a DC public bank, which could actually promote small businesses. And feasibility study has just been done. We haven't seen it yet. But that would take the money out of Wall Street and put it in our own bank. And that could help us in many ways. So I got that part in too.
So I'm fortunate to be in this city long enough to remember when DCRA was bigger than it is today. When you had ABR and so many other agencies under DCRA. So I like to first, sometimes we forget to give credit where credit is due. We've broken up DCRA to some extent already. And we see the work that has happened as a result of that. But I do agree that we have much more work to do. If you don't remember, that was back when Lloyd Jordan, Lloyd Jordan was the director. We actually broke it up and took ABR out. Now I see as a resident and also a business owner, I have to go there for three different things. So I do agree, I don't know if I want to change the name, but I do agree, we have to break up the work of the agency. It's very cumbersome and it's an arduous process still when you go. It's gotten a lot better. But the three different works, work that you have to do in that one particular agency is very difficult. And the agency employees are doing a great job, I must say, but it's still a lot of work that has to be done. So I will agree to break up the agency to some degree.
So fortunately or unfortunately, I've had a lot of interaction with DCRA. I agree, I think it needs to be broken up. I know on occasion, when I rent a property or what have you, you have to go to them for every single thing. And I just think that there's duplicity in some of that effort. And there's a lot of time, as many of you would probably go to DCRA, spend a lot of time with your numbers, sitting in a chair like you are tonight, waiting to be served. So I'll make a long story short, I think, yes, we do need to break it up.
As with my colleagues up here, yes, DCRA does need to be broken up. But that's just the first step. What really needs to happen in the District of Columbia is we have been over-regulated to death. You can almost hardly take a breath in DC without requiring a government permit. And we need to break up some of these regulations. These regulations are stifling innovation, stifling entrepreneurship. And it's entrepreneurship of the small business owners that have built this great nation. And what we have created here in the District of Columbia is a system that is so onerous and so cumbersome that if you can't afford to pay the expediter to help you get your business through DCRA, it's going to take you forever to do it. So yes, we need to break up DCRA. We also need to roll back a lot of the regulations in this city that are stifling entrepreneurship and innovation.
How many people in the audience have had to apply for a permit or get something from DCRA? And how many people have had a good experience doing that? Okay, one hand.
We need to know your secret.
You must be an expediter. So I think that speaks volumes. I support breaking up the agency. We need leadership in this agency. So DCRA is an incredibly important agency. Consumer protection is at the heart of it and it's not protecting anyone. In fact, it's harming a lot of people. DCRA is supposed to do housing inspections, prevent slum lords from doing business. It's also supposed to protect- It's also supposed to protect homeowners against negligent contractors. It doesn't do any of that. These are some of the most heartbreaking hearings I've been to. Let me just say, the expediter, so this is a business based on art dysfunction. We should put expeditors out of business. We got to break that agency up and give it focus and leadership. Some people came in after we made the announcement to please silence your cell phones. So it's kind of distracting when someone's talking and your cellphone goes off. If you could please put them on vibrate. We also have a couple of seats where there's a book or something sitting on them, and we have people standing. If you could remove whatever's on the seat, and you all can have a seat. We have the empty seats, so come join us. Okay, we're going to start with this reader this time. More than half of the assisted living residences in the district, sorry, assisted living residents in the district live in our neighborhood, at communities like Knollwood and Ingleside. The council heard testimony last June on Bill B-220689, the Omnibus Assisted Living Residents Improvement and Quality Long-Term Care Act of 2018. That was a mouthful. All 13 council members were co-sponsors of that bill. But several have since said that they do not support that legislation because it would impose unreasonable requirements on assisted living residences. What is your position on this bill that could, if passed, have a significant impact on our seniors?
I apologize. I'm not very familiar with the bill. Is there any way you can give me a little snapshot, if I may add? I'm not very familiar. It says assisted living. I'm not familiar, I apologize. Other than assisted living facilities, I don't know what.
We have a council member with us who...
If she doesn't mind, then I can give you a little example, if you don't mind.
Okay, is that all right? Do you mind giving us a... Sure, so actually, it's an omnibus bill, so it's pretty comprehensive. But what it would do would be to make much more transparent, I think, the regulations around assisted living facilities. So these are, we actually don't have many assisted living facilities in the district. You have them in your neighborhood, in Ingleside, but like a leisure world type of facility. It also would mandate, I think, how the facilities were run and what the controversial parts are about, I think, dealing with certain patients, like patients with Alzheimer and so forth. And what happened was, so I think in the main, we know we need to make sure that we have good assisted living facilities in the district. The issues that some of the providers have said what's in the bill might even be too restrictive or harmful in a way, that there are unintended consequences with the bill. I can go on and on, but I think I'd be over my time. I mean, if you want me to just answer, I can just wrap it up. What about that? So yeah, my answer is, we have listened to some of the advocates, senior advocates and aging advocates, and we need to make some changes to the bill. And they are being made, is my understanding. It is in the Health Committee with Chairperson Gray. And I believe that we are working with the advocates that have come forward. They've met with my office. It's a lot of seniors' advocates who have expressed concerns about, as I said, unintended consequences in terms of, like, dealing with difficult cases that we deal with when we're aging, right? In terms of people who either have Alzheimer's or somehow lost their facilities, and what kind of care they should have. So I'm hopeful that we can make the changes that are needed, but also make sure that we have a bill that makes assisted living facilities responsive to patient needs. Ms. Reader.
Thank you, Councilmember Silverman, for the explanation. I appreciate that. I have a child of two older parents, who would have been 87 and 89 if they would have lived. And one of the things that I watched my father in the last eight months of his life, live in an assisted living facility that did not care for him. And because my sister and I was there around the clock, we were able to provide the necessary care for him to have more longevity and quality of life to his life. So I do agree that we have a responsibility to provide the necessary resources and services to ensure that quality of life is provided for seniors as they age in the District of Columbia. I believe that you've been the backbone, many of you who are sitting here today have been the backbone to the success of where we are as residents of the city. So as a council member, I will be very responsive to ensure that we are able to add a quality of life that you will enjoy as residents of the District of Columbia. Thank you.
So on this journey to city council, sometimes I have to, and I'm speaking just from the heart, sometimes I have to wonder why we have, have to have a bill or a policy around some things that just make common sense. To care for an elderly person, my mother's 78, my former father-in-law's 85, is something that we should want to do. It's something that should be legislated. But since it does have to be, clearly, I would certainly be in support of providing any and everything that any senior citizen needs for the duration of their stay on this earth. That's my position.
My father-in-law was in an assisted living facility last year, before you asked. And my wife is also a registered nurse. So I have a perspective on this from a patient's side and from a clinical provider's side. The problem with this legislation is it doesn't take into account the day-to-day needs, not just of all of the patients, but also of some of the caregivers. Now, when I talk to the nurses and the aides who work in these facilities, one of their biggest gripes is that the facilities do not have to provide assisted lifting devices to help them get the patients out of their beds. And too many of these nurses are aging themselves and cannot work. So this is just another prime example of a piece of legislation that comes to the district council that may well be well-intended, but they didn't talk to all the stakeholders to get all the information that they need in order to craft a bill that actually tells what it's intended to do.
Well, again, I thank Mrs. Silverman for explaining the bill. It's new to me. What, I have my own experience in terms of assisted living with my late father, who lived in my house for several years before he passed away. And what I would say to this issue is that, at the extreme ends of lifespan, children and seniors, and I'm a senior, by the way, if you couldn't tell already, they're neglected. They're neglected by public policy of our elected government. And I already gave the example of children. It's just a shocking fact of child poverty in the city. And far as seniors, many seniors are being forced out because of foreclosures, and they're not getting the adequate tax relief they need for their home to stay in D.C. And there's a Senior Citizen Tax Relief Amendment Act of 2017 that should be passed.
Thank you. Can you guys hear me? In light of the experience with Initiative 77, which the council repealed today, should the council change the initiative process? One, to prevent voting on initiatives at primary elections? Or two, to provide voters more information on the ballot explaining initiatives? And we start with Mr. Lewis this time. Dr. Lewis.
So I would definitely say we could provide more information. I don't know that changing it from the June ballot would have made any difference. But I do think there should have been a broader campaign conducted to make sure that D.C. residents understood the complexities of Initiative 77. I personally spent time speaking to restaurant owners as well as employees, and heard a variety of feedback, largely because I'm not a councilperson. They were very candid in their positions. But I do think we failed in educating the overall voting population about the complexities of the issue.
So the question, I believe, was, should the process regarding initiatives be changed? Considering the fact that every time the citizens come together and vote for an initiative, the council, in their infinite paternal wisdom, has decided to overturn that initiative, the council just needs to stop playing games and remove the initiative process from the Home Rule Charter, and stop playing with our citizens and letting us think that we have a process and a right in the District of Columbia. If you're going to overturn it every time we use it, then just get rid of it and stop blowing smoke.
I was disappointed myself. I disagreed with the repeal. Now, I had some concerns about Initiative 77. And for those who don't know, I had offered what I call the compromise. But I only could get five votes. I couldn't get seven votes for it. This is one of the big differences in this race. So I believe we need to listen to the voters. We also needed to listen to the tip workers and the restaurant owners. And what our compromise did was address the true public policy issues that Initiative 77 was trying to address, which is, when you eat out at a restaurant, unfortunately, some of the people who work in that restaurant don't get properly paid. I know this is labor chair. This is a wage theft, as it's called. People getting robbed of their wages is a big issue in the restaurant industry. Sexual harassment is also a big issue in the restaurant industry. So what my compromise did was address all those, but listen to you, and not overturn the will of the voters. That's a big difference in this race. Listen carefully to everyone's answers.
Not only did I carry petitions to get Initiative 77 on the ballot, I canvassed my own Brightwood School to try to convince voters to vote for it. And I'm appalled by the action eight-to-five, pay-to-play decision of the D.C. council. Public citizen has to think of the restaurant industry and the executives who gave to councilpeople, and I don't have time to enumerate that. There is, the heart of Initiative 77 is wage theft. And you cannot deal with wage theft effectively until you have really a minimum wage legally established. And secondly, there were two other initiatives that were repealed. Limits on campaign contributions, it's in the 1990s. And of course, Jack Evans overturned that. And the second was sunshine on real estate assessment, 1996, and Nelson never implemented it.
Don't forget to remember.
First, I'll answer the question. Both, I think it should have been placed on the general ballot as opposed to the primary. I think also what's very important for you to understand is I'm an independent. If you called down to the D.C. Board of Elections, you had three different answers. Someone told you you couldn't vote in the primary, called back. They told you you could, called back, they told you you couldn't. So yes, the residents of this city should have been educated. As the only restauranteer on this panel, I think it's very important that you talk to the people in the industry. We have to stop being divisive, and one thing you have to remember, and we have to listen carefully. Even a compromise is not following the will of the voters. Because the will of the voters was not a compromise. The will of the voters was the will of the voters. So even if you present a compromise, that's not what the voters wanted. So we have to look at how we are inclusive and not divisive, and look at all industries of the city where we're making decisions about how revenue is being brought into the city and how we're hiring D.C. residents.
Okay, this question has to do with second-home, short-term rentals. How do you stand on the restrictions on the second-home, short-term rentals like Airbnb? And if you're an incumbent, well, we only have one tonight, how did you vote on this issue? Are we down and down there? Thank you very much.
I'm living personal property rights. It's your home. The government has no right to tell you that you can only rent out a portion of your home or your own home for 90 days. I have friends who work for FEMA and who work for the SVA during disaster relief. And they get deployed around the world for anywhere from three months to 18 months. And so now they're deployed doing work. And now the district government is going to this unilateral design, what they can do with their personal property? I say no. The government has no business telling you as an individual what you can do with your private property. It's yours. And I can't wait for somebody to file the illegal takings lawsuit.
Airbnb is embracing what's called the share economy or the sharing economy, right? So that's renting out rooms in your house, or renting out an accessory dwelling unit. And I think that we need to be authentic to what the sharing economy is. So I guess to answer this question concisely, I voted to have a shared house. Like, if it's your house, if you're a primary residence, then you can rent it on Airbnb. I will tell you, I live on H Street, off H Street Northeast. When I go to the supermarket, everyone's got luggage. That's because all the apartment buildings are being rented on Airbnb. That's not a neighborhood. So I was for the restrictions on Airbnb because I am concerned about that that, by putting those on short-term rental units and operating in pseudo-hotels, it takes those units out of circulation for actually long-term renters.
Okay, I was in the council chambers today, waiting to many hours, and I finally left. There were a lot of local 25 folk there, of us working hotels, and they are legitimately concerned about this issue. Now, let me, my position is, and I think this is in the bill, under consideration, if you have a company outside of D.C. that's simply buying up houses to use for Airbnb, no. This, I agree with, that should not be allowed. And by the way, private property rights sometimes conflict with the needs of the community. So the community needs to have some social control over this. It's not an absolute right. Secondly, as far as 90 days, 60 days versus 90 days, I think we need to have some flexibility there. But people living in your house that are renters, that's fine.
My concern with this was always about multifamily dwellings. And that was safety reasons. When families are living in multifamily dwellings and you have individuals that come into your area, into your space, at short-term rentals, that was my concern. The way that the bill was presented by Mr. McDuffie, I think that when we start doing this and we start telling people what they can do with their own property, we're going right back along that line of saying what you can and cannot do with the will of what you purchased. My concern, again, and I'm glad I'm not on the council at the moment, because my concern would have gone a little bit longer than making avoid votes today. I agree with David. If this is property and you're just buying up so that you can actually forego the hotel process, then no, that's wrong. But if it's your property and you want your property to be a shared property, then that's exactly what you should be able to do. That's your property. So I do agree with that point. And I don't agree with people taking property and taking it off the market for individuals who really need a place to live in the District of Columbia.
So I agree with a lot of my colleagues. As a homeowner, I recognize that oftentimes people need to rent their own homes to cover their own bills, right? So there's a variety of reasons that people rent their own private homes. Maybe they have to cover their water bill. But I also recognize, and I heard this from a few neighbors over in the Capitol Hill area, that they're concerned that people are buying up those properties and renting them out and destabilizing the community. So that I'm opposed to. I think that is where we're removing community from, communities from community. So I would be opposed to that.
The council ruled on Airbnb, so Councilmember Silverman...
So I just wanted to, for everyone's information, so we had a second vote today and the vote was delayed. So if this is an issue that you're very concerned about, you have three more weeks to lobby your council member. Okay, this next question is about paid family leave. What changes, if any, would you make to the district's paid family leave law, which will begin providing benefits for workers on July 1st, 2020? We'll work our way back up the table, so we'll start with Dr.
Well, you know, I recognize that it's a lot of hard work that Councilwoman Silverman had to go through to pass the law, sorry, to get this legislation to its current state. But I do think that we have to have a more inclusive approach. I understand, and I'm very clear that the business community is opposed to it. I'm very clear that there are benefits to a lot of families. But I do believe that there is a midpoint. There's always a midpoint of compromise, and that's what I'd like to see us work toward.
So the question was asked, so I'm going to say for the record, because I've been misquoted more often than not, I am a supporter of paid family leave. I'm not as supportive of the current legislation. I do not agree with 65% of D.C. taxpayer money leaving the District of Columbia. What I looked at and what I'm more in favor of is councilmember's change proposal, which was actually a fee for those individuals who actually work inside the District of Columbia and live outside of the District of Columbia. I really think that it's unfortunate that we're spending, sending, I'm sorry, $150 million plus to Maryland, Virginia, and Pennsylvania. Quite frankly, it's going to be dollars that they can use to tax and fix their roads, fix their trees, fix their sidewalks, some of the issues that we have right here in this community. Quite frankly, that's wrong. And I would agree with that, and I think we could have created and we should create better legislation so we protect the will of the D.C. voters who are putting us in office. Thank you.
Well, first, we recognize that 70% of the workforce lives outside of D.C. that's new. And a large section of them are living what called Ward 9. These are something like 40,000, 40 or 50,000 folks in the last decade or two that have been forced out, displaced by gentrification. Okay? These are not all high-paid workers. I think we owe it to them on the present law to give them paid family leave. Not only that, we are also creating solidarity with our farm objective in that statehood. If we want reciprocity with surrounding jurisdictions, once we become a state, right, we'll get reciprocal tax arrangement, so on, we need solidarity. We should do something good for these workers. So I support the present law.
So Labor Chair, I am doing the oversight on the program, and let me address these two criticisms. First of all, the Maryland and Virginia issue. The money's going to Maryland and Virginia. Paid family leave is an employer-based benefit. So that's like saying, well, we're giving money to Maryland and Virginia because of the minimum wage. We're giving money to Maryland and Virginia because we pay unemployment insurance. If you work in the district but live in Virginia, the district pays your unemployment insurance. So there's, so that's just a specious argument. The second is about the fee issue. So this wouldn't, so the Home Rule Charter, which governs us, prohibits us from taking income from people who work in the district but live elsewhere. So we cannot take income earned in the district and apply it to the paid family leave program. That's actually going to be considered a tax. And that's what, we are specifically prohibited from doing that. So someone who says they don't support paid family leave like this, well, tell me how you're going to get around the Home Rule Charter. We need statehood is what we need, so that Congress doesn't tell us what to do.
Well, I'm very happy to hear that our councilmember is stating clearly and articulately what I have been saying for a while. This whole argument that money's going out of the District of Columbia is a red herring. Because you don't hear anybody complaining about us paying unemployment to people who live in Maryland or Virginia. And that's the same basic logic that you would have to say you don't want to pay paid family leave. Now, I have a problem with this bill because it mandates across the board 62% tax on every business. Now, if you know small businesses, and Ms. Reader can attest to this, restaurants operate on razor thin margins. And if you are a small business owner, that 62% tax may be the difference between you staying in business and your business closing and having all of your employees be unemployed. I think we need to look at maybe a sliding scale for small businesses, maybe at 2%, maxing out at 6.2%. But having an across-the-board 6.2% tax is really going to hurt too many of our small businesses.
Have to wait my three seconds. Do you support Bill 220904, the Clean Energy D.C. Omnibus Amendment Act 2018 that would increase the requirements for renewable energy generation and expand the Sustainable Energy Trust Fund? And why? And we'll start with Ms. Reader.
So again, this is an additional fee on small business community. But I do believe that we have to be mindful of where we are as a country with clean energy and climate control. So this is one that I actually would support. Because I do believe that we have a responsibility to our environment and we see what's happening in our city. So I do support this. But when you think about all of these new additional fees on the community, small business community, you're isolating people to be able to have a major workforce who are D.C. residents in the District of Columbia. So we have to be mindful of how we do any legislation. And when you do it all at one time, you're isolating people to be able to survive in the city. And I don't think any of us want that. So, thank you.
Well, I testify as a climate scientist on this bill. I support it. I think the provisions regarding low-income folk could be strengthened a bit. In my testimony, which will be on my website, by the way, I have all my questionnaires' testimony on the website, so you can see the details. I suggested in my testimony that we need to address transportation more vigorously because that's about a quarter of the carbon emissions. And of course, it's a big source of air pollution, which hurts people of all ages. So carbon emissions and air pollution are tied together. We have to address both. And secondly, the emissions of methane, like in Georgetown, methane is a potent greenhouse gas. We have to move away from natural gas and address this issue very seriously.
It's hard to follow a climate scientist on this bill. So this is one of the major ways in which we, as a city, can address climate change. So in the main, I am supportive, but I have listened to our big building owners, and they have, I think, some reasonable concerns. The biggest concern is that older buildings are less energy efficient than newer buildings. So if you own a lot of older buildings, the impact of this bill on you is going to be a lot heavier than if you own newer buildings, right? So I think we need to give a little bit more assistance, figure out how for folks who have older rent-controlled buildings, because the issue actually, if you think about it, is on renters. We don't want the cost of this bill passed along to rent-controlled buildings and people in affordable housing. So that's what I, you know, so in the main, I'm supportive. I do want us to figure out how we don't make sure there's unintended consequences on renters in rent-controlled buildings.
I love the answers that I'm hearing. I support the bill, but, no, I don't support the bill, period. The bill, the way it's written, is too ambiguous. There are so many devils in the details that if this bill isn't acted the way it's currently written, it would be possible, I'm not going to say that they would do it, but it is possible that they could ban cars from downtown D.C. simply because the bill as written is too ambiguous. We need to, if you want to do something like this, we need to make sure that we don't have all those unintended consequences. And we don't take care of unintended consequences at the back end after the fact. We need to be proactive and think about those unintended consequences at the front end to make sure they don't jump up and bite us.
So yes, I support the bill, very simply. And in all fairness, I think I want to take a closer look to see what some of the devil in the details may be. And I would also be, I'm equally concerned about just overbuilding. When we talk about clean energy, clean air, but also the overbuilding in the city is equally impacting our environment.
Okay. Let's talk about juvenile justice. So please give us your opinions and knowledge on the current state of juvenile justice in the city. What is working and what can be improved? And we'll start with Dr.
I think there's too much harassment of youth. And I already pointed to the activity of the police, which is not transparent. D.C. ACLU has issued a report on this. And it's not only in the streets, it's also a fear evasion issue, which came up in today's council. Oh, actually, it's going to be postponed to November 1st. People are jailed because of fear evasion in Metro. And I think that's ridiculous. It leaves a blot on their record, and we need a more humane approach, a more sane approach to this issue. As far as the other aspects of justice to juveniles, again, I go back to the NEAR Act, and we need more community involvement in policing.
We have too many young people in this city who just don't have hope and feel they don't have opportunity. And, you know, I'm not sure how to answer a question like this in a minute. I mean, obviously, it has to do with that our schools are not serving a lot of our young people, especially our young people in poverty. It has to do with the fact that, I will tell you, as Labor Chair, what I hear from employers is that it's not, it's reading math skills that are obstacles to a lot of our young people getting employment, but it's actually more basic habits, showing up on time, knowing how to communicate, knowing how to deal with conflict, knowing how to just manage life's difficulties, which end up being the big barriers to employment. I'm not, I don't need to evade the question here about juvenile justice, but what we need to do is make sure that our young people are coming out of our schools and they can read and do math and they're prepared not only for work, but for life. I'm already out of time. Okay, maybe we can get a little more time to talk about this one.
So I'm going to say something positive about the District of Columbia and something that it does. The youth court system actually is an agency that is providing positive results. This is a system that allows certain youth offenders not to have to go through the traditional court system and gives them a way to come through the system without being completely marred by the system. If you look at the numbers, the youth court system in D.C. is working. So you're asking something good going on in the juvenile justice system? I would use that as an example of something that is working.
My time with the Department of Youth and Rehabilitative Services gave me the exposure of actually sitting down with some of these kids who had committed crimes. Young people who, for one reason or the other, some did it for funds, some did it out of necessity. I remember a young man telling me that he just had to get some food for his kids. Department of Youth and Rehabilitative Services and the work that I've done in youth development requires that we take a holistic approach. So you have to look at the community, you have to look at the environment that the young person grows up in, we have to provide mentoring and support services, guidance, exposure. It's a holistic approach to helping these kids stay on and in some cases, get back on track.
Trying to figure out how can I answer this question in a minute, because I've actually done the work. We talked earlier about Credible Messengers. It's really a program out of the Department of Youth and Rehabilitative Services. And we talked about wraparound services, but to really look at the evidence-based work when you're able to do the work that I've done, and that's put 144 young people in the impoverished neighborhoods into college, graduate them, bring them back home in sustainable careers where they're actually now part of the middle-class population. That's the work of juvenile justice and youth violence. It is not a one-solution-based initiative. It is the work of everyone in this room. It's the work of everyone in the community. It's the work of government, holistic approach, like my colleagues have said. But more than holistic, it's evidence-based. You've got to show that you can prove outcomes. And you do that by working not just with the young people, but with their families as a whole. And you have a job at the beginning so you can have an outcome at the end. So that's how you do the work.
We're going to have maybe one or two more questions, and then we'll have our wrap-up. The next question is, should the council lower the voting age from 18 to 16? And why? And I think we're going to start with Dr. Schwartzman, or do we just start just? Councilmember Silverman.
So I admitted initially I had reservations about this. And then some young people, including students at Wilson High School, met with me. And I was compelled by one argument that they made, which is when you have the voting age at 18, a lot of our young people are away of college. And we all know that requesting an absentee ballot, it maybe isn't the most exciting way to cast your first vote. And it's difficult. You've got to request it, you get it mailed, you've got to mail it back. And the argument that the young people made to me that I thought was compelling is that by voting at 16, you're at home, you can vote with your parents or your guardian, and that hopefully will create a habit. And as I talked about before, it's our habits, creating good habits of some of the obstacles that we face in work and in other life issues. So I decided that I am going to support the bill. And I am hopeful that those good habits will be created because certainly we need to raise civic participation in our elections.
Should the voting age be lowered? No. 16-year-olds do not have the intellectual capacity to choose whether or not they can smoke or drink. 16-year-olds do not have the intellectual capacity to decide whether or not they can purchase a fire alarm. 16-year-olds do not have the intellectual capacity to do a lot of things that adults can do. So why are we going to let somebody who is not capable, according to our current laws, of doing all of these other things, do something where they can do some real damage, like voting? So no, I would not be in favor of lowering the voting age to 16.
I am in favor of it. I believe that they can pay taxes. I believe that they can drive a car. And two years later, we can ask them to go to war. So I am in favor of it. You know, I do question whether or not there's maturity factor, but some kids are very mature. We saw last year on the National Mall, those kids were outstanding, and some of them were younger than 16. So yes, I support it.
I like Ruston. I had the pleasure of marching in the March for the Oives. And it was one of the most moving demonstrations I've ever seen in my life. Those young people united themselves better than adults that I've seen in many years. So not only am I in favor of it, I'm also in favor of understanding how the civic process works. When I was at school, we had D.C. Civics. And that education process taught me how to understand my responsibility to this city. So not only am I in favor of it, but I think we need to start very early in educating our young people on their voting responsibility, their D.C. history, and their role in terms of their right... their DC history and their role in terms of their rights. And again, we pay taxes at 16. So yes, I am very much in favor of it, but our part is to educate them early enough so that they are understanding what their vote means and how it matters. So yes, I'm in favor.
Well, my colleague, De- De- Deon, Deon, I'm sorry, uh Deon. Uh I agree with that issue with that response. I filled out a questionnaire to support a 16-year-old voting. I think we do need, as far as the issue of 16-year-old not having the intellectual capacity to stop drinking or to start drinking or smoke marijuana and so on. I see that in many adults which lack that ability too. So uh but I, there are a lot of 16-year-olds that I think are really at the cutting edge of understanding the biggest challenges we have in our society in the world. And I would say submit climate change is one example. I participated in demonstrations with a lot of young people. Uh so we need the civic education as part of it.
Okay, let's talk about the comprehensive plan. The council's committee on the hall heard testimony on the proposed changes to the framework element of the district's comprehensive plan, which is intended to guide the city's growth for the next 20 years. Nearly 300 witnesses testified and many expressed concerns about the Office of Planning's proposed changes, some of which would make it more difficult for residents to challenge developers' plans. Since then, not much has been done. Nothing has happened. So what should the council do to address the proposed changes to the comprehensive plan? And let's start with Mr. Chippies.
This is another example of massive legislation that attempts to do something ineffective. The comprehensive plan in its current iteration is overly cumbersome and completely unworkable. It needs to be broken up and sometimes you just you can't do things in a comprehensive way effectively. You need to take things apart and deal with them almost in a line-by-line manner in order to effectively deal with it. This comprehensive plan, as in its current iteration, I cannot support it simply because it's trying to do too much, it's overgrown, it's not specific. And again, the devil is always going to be in the details and there are too many details that are left highly open.
So whenever we talk about the comprehensive plan, I always ask, does everyone understand what the comprehensive plan is? Yeah, okay, that's what I thought. Uh so the comprehensive plan is our land use map, how we're going to use land in the city. Uh and and the council's role is a little bit different, let's say, than our neighbor a few blocks up the street in Montgomery County. So the Montgomery County Council determines land use. The council actually doesn't. We have an independent zoning commission that does. What the comp plan does is give the guidance to the zoning commission, if that makes sense. Uh so why take on the comprehensive plan as it is? Is it A, has to make sense, which it doesn't right now, which is why we have a million lawsuits. And second, it has to address one of our biggest land use issues, which is affordable housing. Right now, the framework, the narrative that has been given to us on the council doesn't specifically address affordable housing. So how can we have a land use plan without addressing the key land use issue?
Great question. I testify with many others to that, to this issue. Uh the press and comprehensive plan, which is now under review and there were 3,000 amendments proposed, where we're considering the framework part, which includes what Alyssa just said. So uh this came down from the mayor, the Office of Planning. So what they did was weaken the existing comprehensive plan. They took out a reference to gentrification, displacement and affordable housing and so on. And why was this done? Because we have a government, the Green Team and allies in the council, that want to promote gentrification and displacement run away. And actually, that's the battle that I urge you to address. And come to court, Superior Court tomorrow morning at 9:30, McMillan Park issue again is in court.
So earlier I mentioned a little bit about the zoning with the ASC commissioners and that was a part of the comprehensive plan. So I do agree. I think one of the things that we have to remember is that our responsibility on a local level is to be involved. When you remove our local elected officials' ability to actually speak on legislation that relates to housing and affordable housing, that's a problem. The second piece is, we really need to create out the AMI based on DC. Because we were looking at Montgomery County and the other jurisdictions and we're saying that that's how we're basing our affordable housing mechanism. That's a problem. Many of our families, again, work here, can't afford to live here. That's a problem. So I do not agree with the current comp plan. There should be some changes in it. And it has to start on a very local level in rooms like this. And we have not done that level of involvement in a very long time. And we have to get back to looking at our residents having the first right to be involved on this level. So thank you.
So I disagree with the current comprehensive plan. I think that there's a couple of things. One, uh you know, I'm curious to understand how we have a plan that doesn't include one of the biggest, the biggest crises facing us, which is overdevelopment and the inability for working class and the people who live in the city. I also am concerned about the role, and I've said this before, so I'm trying to think of another way to say it, but how do we get the developers out of the bordering with us? There is no way that we can have a truly comprehensive plan that's not inclusive of all DC residents and ensuring that we're making not only housing opportunities, but affordable housing opportunities available to them.
Okay, beginning in 2020, public funds will be available for council candidates and private contributions will be substantially limited. For this election, however, there are no public fundings and the higher limits on private contributions still apply. What can be done to ensure that private contributions in this election do not have an undue influence on council members? And should there be limits on contributions from businesses with district contracts? Or seeking district contracts?
So yes, there should be limits on businesses doing maybe any kind of contributions to any person running for public office. And I also think that there should be limitations or more transparency around employment opportunities for council persons that are currently sitting in office. Uh a dollar for dollar. So if a person making, has another part-time job making $50,000 in their council seat outside of council, then they should either not take that money from DC government or they have to give us some sort of a dollar amount. Um and I'm missing, I did drop that in the entire question. I think I answered your question. Is that correct? Did I answer the entire question? You asked about the business contracts?
Limiting contributions to businesses is another one of these, I call them red herring arguments. So you're going to limit what a business can give, but you're going to allow union officials to give individually up to the maximum. And therefore, they're skirting the campaign contribution limits because each union official gives depending upon the race, like ours is $1,000. So you have 15 union officials, so now you've got $15,000 from this union. But now you're limiting a business to only giving $1,000. So you see, we need to be really careful when we start playing this game on limiting who can give what. If you're going to limit it, then limit it across the board and don't let anyone slide through the loophole. And if you're not going to limit it for everyone, then you limit it for no one.
I made it really easy. For three elections now, I only take money from living, breathing people. Not from LLCs, not even from labor packs, not from companies, whatever. They have to be people. This is one of the contrasts in the race. David and I only accept money from individuals. Uh and I do that because as council member, I am not thinking who I owe. Like when it comes to Airbnb or any other issue, I am thinking about what is the best public policy. There are other candidates in this race who have maxed out contributions, multiple ones, from LLCs, corporations, you know, people tied to the mayor. This is one of the biggest contrasts in the race, I think. How you uh how you collect money for your campaign says a lot about you and how you're going to make decisions at the Wilson Building.
Well, I certainly support not, well, having a law to forbid businesses to, that engage in a visit with the city to give contribution. That's a conflict of interest there. Let's be clear, what can you do now about this election? Uh nothing, because the law is already in place. But what you can do is follow the money. Go to the Office of Campaign Financing and see who's getting the contributions. Or read the Washington Post occasionally and follow the race. And uh one of the writers does report on it. Of course, the editorial board is a different story than the Washington Post. But let me say this for 2020, yes, we'll have a public option. Until the Supreme Court ruling changes, and I'm looking forward to packing the court in the future, we can uh, we can't eliminate corporate contributions.
So I'm going to answer the question this way. Um I take, I've been a community activist. I take money from individuals who are community activists. I'm a homeowner. I take money from individual homeowners. I've been a renter. I take money from individuals who are renters. My dad was a shop steward, so if a union wanted to give me money, I'd take money from individuals who are in the union. And now I'm a business owner. So I take money from individuals who are business owners. And I think we have to move towards an ideological, that we have to be smart. Our ideas have to be smart and we have to stop separating people in this city and unite the city across all angles and stop judging people based on successes that they've had. I am excited to be a community activist and a business owner. I'm excited to have worked on legislation and worked with the mayor as a grants manager. So I personally think when you unite this city, you actually get much more done than dividing this city. And that's the way I look at it. So I am proud to accept contributions from individuals and business owners. So I don't divide this city. I think we have to be together.
Okay. All right, does everybody speak? Okay. So we are at 8:49. Uh we're going to ask one more question and then we'll have closing statements. Okay, to make sure that we're wrapping up by nine, like we said. So this is our final question for today. The district's Vision Zero program is intended to reduce traffic fatalities and involving pedestrians, cyclists, motorists to zero by 2024. Instead of fatalities, instead of fatalities having increased, decreased, they've increased particularly this year. We seem to be going in the wrong direction. What would you do on the council to help the district to achieve the Vision Zero objectives? Uh let's start with, yes.
I love this question. It came up at 1:06, too. Uh there are too many damn cars in the street, number one. How many of you have almost been killed by a car, usually an SUV, running a red light or a stop sign? Only that? I would expect more. Uh I know my wife has almost been killed, but she wasn't. But here's my proposal to deal with this issue. Yes, I am for a car-free downtown DC. Yes. How do we move to that? We have to subsidize public transport. And that buses, of course, first of all, electrified, powered by solar energy. And have a downtown congestion charge which goes to finance public transit. Uh Move DC has already did a plan on that. I'm for it. Let's get fuel cars and more bikes on the street.
So we need to fund Vision Zero. I, you know, I know that people have feelings about bikes and scooters and cars. But no matter how you feel about all those things, it is just, it's just, we can't allow people to die while doing their daily routines. Whether that's going to the safe way, I guess that way, uh whether it's driving to work, walking to work, biking to work, we need to make sure that we have a safe city. I will tell you that we've done, I know, this is a citywide campaign. I've done meet and greets all over the city. This is the sleeper issue of this year, which is everyone's concerned about traffic and pedestrian, you know, pedestrian safety, bicycling safety, car safety. We need to fund it. We need to slow, we need to look at crash data and figure out the most dangerous intersections and strategically put either MPD officers and non-uniform folks to slow people down and make sure everyone is safe in this city.
Vision Zero is a nice concept. It sounds good, but understand there is nothing we can do legislatively that is going to reduce vehicular homicides or traffic homicides to zero. That's why they're called accidents. So what do we do? Uh my colleague here wants to ban all cars from downtown DC. I have two bad news. I'm not riding a bike from southeast Washington into downtown DC with my wife. You do. It's not going to happen. I'm just telling you that for a fact. And I'm looking at some of your faces and some of you look like you may be a year or two older than me. And I know you're not going to ride a bike downtown. So let's understand, we do need to have smart legislation, which is going to allow cars and bikes to be on the streets safely at the same time. But declaring war on cars and banning them from downtown DC is going to do one thing. You are going to destroy DC's economy, you are going to drive our restaurants out of business and the unemployment rate is going to go through the roof.
So I think, I, I, I think that it's a lofty idea as well. It's almost like I have a vision, a mission statement, that our vision statement is not completely achievable, but something to work toward. I think that people should be able to get around it any way they choose to. However, uh I would like to see more protection versus penalty. Now currently, the district loves to ticket and tow, and I really don't know how that's going to protect us. But I do think there are, there are strategies, there's proven strategies of things that we can do in terms of widening the bicycle lanes, uh ensuring that there's better lighting in areas, like particularly around the wharf and some of the areas of southwest. I just think there are other strategies that we can approach, particularly paying for, using the general fund and not increasing tickets to $500, but still using other dollars that are out there to ensure the safety of everyone.
So I actually agree that we need to have more education around driving as in a car and driving on a bike. If you're using your bike the same way I'm using my car, you have to follow the same traffic rules that I have to follow. I think that's only fair. And this education, it must occur around that. Um we lack that level of education. I've seen my siblings run red lights, turn without notice, and that's unfair. Um and then as a car driver, I drive a little Mini Cooper. I'm the one to blame. So I think we have to be fair. We have to educate people. And we both, if we're using the road the same way, we have to follow the rules of the law. There will be accidents. I really don't want them to be fatalities, but there will be accidents. But it's around educating individuals. But it's around educating individuals and following the rules of the law and sharing the road. We have to share the road. So that's my take.
So we're gonna have our closing statements, and we're gonna start at the end, where we started at the beginning, and come back this way. You'll have two minutes this time, to take that time to do what you would like to do in that two minutes. There's no requirement at all. And we appreciate the fact that you are here, sharing your knowledge with us, and letting us get to know you. We also want to thank our timekeeper for keeping us on time and getting so many questions through. And we'll start down at the end and come on through.
Again, good evening, my name is Ralph J. Chittabend Sr. First, I want to apologize to my colleagues and to you all for running out of here a little while ago. My wife knows that I'm doing a candidate's form, and she called me. And so for her to have called me while I was up here, it had to have been important. There's a reason I've been married for 35 years. So I'm running because, as you hear, if you ask me a question, I'm gonna give you an answer. You may not like the answer that I give you, but I'm gonna answer your question. And I'm gonna be clear, I'm gonna be concise. And we can have a discussion about what I think and why I think it. I'm running because there needs to be a different voice on the council. We have had one-party rule in the District of Columbia, and it needs to stop. We need to have diversity of thought, diversity of ideas, so that we can make DC the city that we all want DC to be. We all want DC to be the city where every child gets a proper education that is available by walking out of his or her home. We want DC to be the place where everyone has adequate access, convenient access to healthcare. We want the District of Columbia to be a place where we don't have to worry about having our children going outside and getting shot when they're trying to play. I want to be on the council because I am ready, willing, and able to have those hard discussions. I have never been a part of the problem here in the District of Columbia. I have never been an elected officer, I have never had a grant, I've never had a contract, I've never been involved in any sort of shenanigans with this district government. I owe nobody any favors, no one has ever given me a dime. If you want a true independent voice on the District of Columbia, unboired and unbowed, vote Ralph J. Chittabend Sr., number one on the ballot, November 6th, for at-large member of the DC Council. And if you have any questions, you know where to find them.
I understand enough of that to do when I pay opening remarks. My name is Ruston Lewis, I'm running for the DC City Council independent seat. I'm running because I see an inclusive DC. I'm a first-time candidate, never run for office. I've always done community work, and always worked with, in education and youth. I believe that DC has so much more potential, but it has to be an inclusive city. It has to be a city that sees itself through a lens of equity. I have come out as a grassroots, knock on the door, raise a dollar, raise a dime. My biggest donor today is probably my mother. Because, again, I don't want to be tied to anyone. The decisions I make will be that of my own. It often reminds me, when I was in school, working on my dissertation, my professor once said, "If you're gonna be successful with this, you gotta do it alone. You can't have anybody else guiding you along the way." So ladies and gentlemen, I thank you for staying with us tonight, I thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, and I remind you, Ruston Lewis, DC City Council, I would appreciate one of your two votes.
I'm gonna follow suit just because of my height. I'm Dion Reader, and I know that I am your candidate for November the 6th. So I'm gonna tell you why. I've spent my last 20 years in this city, working vastly across all sectors of government, nonprofit, legislation, and small business. I know the importance of bridge building and being a collaborator across all ethnicities, across all races, all walks of life, and all people. I know what it's like to work with people that are in impoverished conditions who wanna come out. I know what it's like to have the voices of individuals who are doing very well and want very simple things done by our city, like their trees trimmed, or their sidewalks repaired, and no one answers. I know what it's like to get through red tape and bureaucracy and get the job done. I know what it's like to be sad fans and unmovable, standing right there in the face of adversity. I know what it's like when somebody feels as if they've given you something, you have a responsibility to answer to that. But I've always been the type of individual that I'm gonna do what's right by the people in this city, because I was raised by the people in this city. And I also have a long, loving respect and love for the residents in the city. I was a public servant before I was was popular. We have a lot of stars down on our city council. But do we have enough public servants and leaders that understands what it's like to cross this city each and every day from Ward 1 to Ward 8, seeing the plight of every individual, and what's important to get an elected official in office that's gonna have your interests at heart? I am that candidate. Dion Reader, November the 6th. I want one of your votes, and you're gonna make sure that I hold you accountable, you hold me accountable, once I get elected. Dion Reader, for your seat at large city council. You'll have two to support here. Thank you.
Okay, I have the two minutes, right? Okay, now, I'm gonna...
Quiet in the back, please.
It's two minutes from right now. Vince Gray, when he was mayor, had a vision of one city, remember that? It didn't become a reality. And we have shockingly high economic and racial disparities that persist in DC. Remember what Albert Einstein said? You know, "If you do the same thing over and over and expect a different result, that's a definition of insanity." I'm not accusing anyone of being insane, but this is, the policies of trickle-down economics in housing have failed us. We cannot continue to follow the agenda of the big lobby that represents the big banks and developers and corporate sector, that's the federal city council. We need to make a break with that. I commit, by the way, you've seen green signs around, right? Some of the mayor, the Green Team, I also have green signs. My green signs are not, don't stand for money, they stand for a green and just future for all residents. And I want to emphasize that to reduce these and eliminate these disparities is for the benefit of all residents, not simply the poor, everyone. And I'm looking forward to that future for our city. And I want to mention my remaining time, I pointed to a DC public bank. I was an initiator of this concept when I ran in 2010, and then I've been serving on the steering committee of the DC Public Banking Center, and now we have a feasibility study that has been done. So I'll take a little credit for that. I would also point to, we need apprenticeship programs in the high schools in the community for 21st century jobs. And that, we need to address the unemployment of, that's so high east of the rivers, especially the... And I'm voting for myself, Alyssa Silverman.
I'm happy to, David. So I'm Alyssa Silverman, and I'm here to ask you to return me to the Wilson Building to serve you for four more years. I do want to thank, first I want to thank the audience, as I mentioned before. The Wilson Building functions the way it does because citizens aren't engaged, right? So the shenanigans happen because special interests think they can do it, because you're not paying attention. So I want to thank you all for being here, because it is an engaged group of residents, which will create, I think, a much more equitable city. And I do want to thank the Chevy Chase ANC 34G, the Warford Dems, and certainly our moderator Samantha and Candace and Randy for keeping time. Let me just say this, you know, I actually agree with David. We keep doing the same stuff over and over again, and we get the same results. A big achievement gap, homicide rate that's too high, a DCRA that doesn't protect residents, and a housing crisis in which people who almost make a million dollars in our city think the rent's too damn high and houses are unaffordable. We can't keep doing the same thing over and over again, and that's why I ask the tough questions. That's why I demand answers. I want to understand, what is our return on your taxpayer dollars? What are the results? I've been criticized for that. I think I'm doing my job in making sure that I'm safeguarding your taxpayer dollars and trying to actually come to creative solutions to close the achievement gap, to bring greater equity, and make sure that it's not just people who are doing business with the city that are benefiting, but actually our residents, including our most vulnerable residents. So I'm asking for your vote, Alyssa Silverman. Thank you all so much tonight. Thank you. Let's give all the candidates a round of applause. We want to thank everybody who have come out and spending time with us tonight. We hope that you feel like you'll have an informed vote, okay? So November 6th, we've got work to do, all right? Choose two. Choose two. We still have snacks over here, we don't want to pack them all up, so grab a plate on your way out. I plan.